All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for March 3, 2022. As Secretary, please call the row.
President Brown.
Here.
Mr. Sulek.
Here.
Mayor DeGea, present. Mayor Bachi.
Present.
Ms. Dumas.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
And Mayor Ali.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's take here the first official order of business is the installation and oath of newly appointed board members. So Ms. Chambers will be leading off, but we have two others who have to be sworn in as well. So let's all go. Let's go.
Everybody but me and you.
You've been sworn in already.
All right. Please raise your right hand, please. I, your name.
I, your name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of member.
Of member.
Of Board of the Trustees.
Of the Board of Trustees.
Of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
Of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's a committee member. Yeah.
That's what he had to do for you. Okay.
You're good.
All right. That's what he said.
Let's do the approval of the minutes from our February 17, 2022 meeting. So moved. Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Is there a question? There's no question about objection. The minutes will stand approved as they are printed. All right. Let's go to a question of public session on a specific agenda topic. Madam CEO, anybody sign up for that?
They have not, Mr. President.
They have not, then we'll have your report, please.
Thank you, President Brown and members of the board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have no active cases among district employees. I'm very happy to report that. We have 206 folks who have recovered and returned to work since the beginning of the pandemic. We have one employee with COVID-like symptoms awaiting their test results and no employees remaining at home because a member of their household has tested positive. So with this continued decline in cases in Cuyahoga County and the surrounding area, we removed our face covering requirement on February 28th, but we will be maintaining our COVID reporting requirements and our process through HR and will continue that for the near term. So we have been talking a lot about federal funding for infrastructure for some time, and so I'd like to take this time to update you on the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and our efforts to ensure that funding is available both for district projects and also for our member communities. So as you know, this is a work in progress. We're awaiting guidance from US EPA and then from Ohio EPA as to how they will implement this funding over the next five years. But I thought it would be helpful to touch base on what we know now and the work that we've been doing around this funding. So we'll just turn quickly to this PowerPoint. We're talking about the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. This was signed November 15 of 2021. It's 1.2 trillion in infrastructure funding across the nation and across all types of infrastructure. Looking specifically at water, we're talking about $50 billion administered through the US EPA for water into two buckets: clean water, which refers to wastewater-related projects, and then drinking water. There's also funding for other agencies like FEMA, the US Army Corps of Engineers, et cetera, that we will be evaluating, that our partners, the watershed organizations will be evaluating. But our focus is on that $50 million bucket at US EPA. And more specifically, we know that the majority of this funding, go ahead, John, will go through the state revolving fund. So in Ohio, those are the water pollution control loans that we use that Ken has talked about a great deal in terms of the spine of financing our capital program. So the bulk of the money, the bulk of the $50 billion, will go through the state revolving fund, $43 billion across the country. Getting more specific, that's $11.7 billion each for clean water and drinking water. Then there's $5 billion for emerging contaminants and $15 billion focused on lead service line replacements. I also want to highlight because of President Biden's visit recently, there was a lot of conversation around the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. This is a wonderful program. It's seeing $1 billion through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. We have accessed this money. Our partners have accessed this money. But it's important to know that it is not available for traditional infrastructure. It is focused on protection projects, habitat restoration projects. It is not available for sewer and wastewater-type projects that we typically do. Great program, but again, our focus is on that $43 billion. So then if we look specifically in Ohio, in terms of what Ohio EPA knows now on their estimated funding, our focus is that Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and that is estimated to be $624 million in additional funding over the next five years. If we break that down year by year, Ohio EPA is anticipating, again, if you go to the next slide, John, about $100 million going up to $138 million over the next five years of this additional funding. So this is what we know now. The Ohio Clean Water State Revolving Fund will get about $100 million of additional funding from 2022 to 2026. Forty-nine percent of that is required to go through grants or principal forgiveness. The remainder will go through the traditional loans of the state revolving fund. The Biden administration has made clear that they want communities to access this funding who have not received SRF funding in the past, and they're very focused on disadvantaged communities, which is a term that we will talk about more. It's a pivotal term in terms of the application of this funding, and they're also focused on environmental justice. President Brown, did you have a question?
Now, I'm gonna wait for you to define these communities.
Okay. I'll keep going. I'll keep going. So based on what we know now, we have two areas of focus in terms of our advocacy work around this funding. We are obviously focused at funding district projects. The state revolving fund is essential to the work that we do, ensuring that that remains solid. Ohio EPA is known for their innovation and their creativity in terms of working with us. We see that on the Shoreline Tunnel work that Ken has talked about. So funding for district projects is very important, but we're also focused on funding for member community projects. Our member communities have historically not taken advantage of the state revolving fund, and so we have put together a proposal that is at your seats around an enhanced member community infrastructure program. And just to remind everyone, the Member Community Infrastructure Program is the district's efforts since 2017 to support the repair and renewal of sewer infrastructure and to reduce these human health and environmental impacts from sanitary sewer overflows, basement flooding, septic systems, common trench sewers, and illicit discharges. I have here a picture of the 2022 awards that you all made. Go ahead, John. I know it's a map, not a picture. I threw you off on that one. The 2022 awards that you all made, and you see every year with the Member Community Infrastructure Program that this is addressing really fundamental issues at the community level in terms of their infrastructure, and this impacts our infrastructure. It impacts the quality of the streams, and it impacts the quality of Legere. What we know, however, is that we have $15 million available from 2022 to 2026 through the rate study to fund grants under the MCIP. But through our sewer system evaluation studies, we know that there's over $950 million in need at the local level. So there is a big gap between the funding that we have available and the need among our member communities. So we have put together this proposal to US EPA, to Ohio EPA, for $100 million of this new money over five years into two buckets: $10 million per year to add to the MCIP program, so to boost the grant program itself. And then also recognizing that to actually efficiently implement all of this money in a short period of time, we have to move beyond the traditional project-by-project approach that the state has taken, where you've come up with a project, you apply for that specific project, and you get that project awarded. So we have asked for $10 million per year for the district to implement projects in partnership with our member communities. We obviously have a long track record of doing that. To allow for regional entities such as the district and interested local governments to enter into cooperative agreements to complete these projects with a focus on the disadvantaged areas of our service area in compliance with US EPA's guidance. So if we look a little bit further, we want to maximize the benefits of this federal funding for the district and our member communities. This definition, President Brown, of disadvantaged communities has historically kept out urban communities. It has focused on low-population rural communities, and that needs to be fixed so that the money is available to the communities of Northeast Ohio. To allow for cooperative agreements to speed that project delivery, the focus on grants versus loans, and then we didn't, I didn't talk much about the new Build America, Buy America provisions, but those have expanded now to manufactured products as well as iron and steel, so making sure that there's realistic implementation of those provisions as well. So we've done a lot. I think we've been quite the pest to US EPA and Ohio EPA around this funding and this innovative proposal. We presented to them in June. We presented to Chicago EPA in August. We made our proposal to Ohio EPA. Then the legislation was signed last year. We've sent three letters to the agency just at a very granular level, making these issues and concerns known and our recommendations for what the guidance should include. We anticipate guidance from US EPA in March, and the first wave of funding would come in October. And then I think if you go to the last slide, obviously, we will continue our outreach to US EPA and Ohio EPA. They very much like our proposal, but they continue to search for the method by which they would do this. They will be talking to us tomorrow as the water industry around their definition of disadvantaged community, so we'll see how they've responded to our requests. And then once we have the US EPA guidance, this is my last point, it's actually the state that implements the state revolving fund. So we'll have to see how Ohio EPA responds to US EPA's guidance. So that's just a quick update on where we are now with the federal funding.
Okay, thank you. Just maybe a couple of questions, or maybe just to raise something to a conversation level.
Yeah.
If I could. Because we spent a lot of time and energy kind of identifying where the opportunities were in terms of, as an example, over and under sewers. Of course, CSO has been a focus for a long period of time. But I'm thinking about kind of some of the programs that are part of either water or sewer service program where you have the line protection programs, but it's responsibility still of the property owner to pay for that over some period of time. And so whether or not there's an opportunity to advocate on the part of the community, particularly of communities that have large urban areas with folks who are, as we look at our affordability programs, 250% of property, the opportunity to fund that type of infrastructure replacement for them as opposed to having them in a situation where they're being asked to do something that they really can't afford to do. I would think that that's an opportunity because so much of what we do, either the local government or the district, has responsibility in the right of way. But on property is where many of these problems exist or have existed historically. So an opportunity to bring some equity to the community by maybe having that conversation if it is not already being discussed at that level.
That's, it's an excellent point. Frank, under the MCIP, I believe, we've done some, at least on the septic replacement.
We will fund private property lateral replacement. The community has to implement that, right? And that is a great discussion, and you're well aware of that discussion. But personally, I feel if we're gonna solve basement flooding, you're gonna need to work on private property one of these days, and we're gonna have to come to grips with that. Now, in terms of the infrastructure funding and its ability to fund that, I don't think there's anything precluding that. We'll have to look deeper on that issue, but I don't think there's anything precluding that. It's the willingness of a community to want to make that happen.
Well, just again, thinking about it, because I remember years ago, you know, digging at the curb was, you know, $1,500, $2,000 replacing a line is probably, you know, $10,000 to $15,000. Who's got that to do that type of work?
You know, it is interesting. There has been some movement in that regard at the local level. Certain communities have advanced that. You know, we would have never thought of that years ago, but there has been a bit of movement in that direction, and other communities outside of the district, I know, have programs.
To the point, if one of the major quality-of-life issues for our industry is basement flooding, and a lot of the problem is on private property, the only way to resolve it is for us to help mitigate that financial burden and create a program that allows people to address that. That helps us as well.
Right.
So I'm just, I'd be interested in following up on having not just dialogue, but a process to get us to an outcome on that.
Okay.
Very good. That's my report. That's my report, President Brown.
All right. Anybody else for the good of the order?
I just wanted to ask one thing.
Ms. Dumas.
Kyle, in your conversations, did they give any reasoning why you would exclude an urban area and, and highlight rural areas of low population when we have the most massive problems of poverty in the urban areas?
I think Ms. Dumas, and I'll let Eric answer this as well, because he has a lot of experience working with some of these smaller utilities. But in general, I think the idea was that there's population in these urban areas that could fund the infrastructure.
I thought you were going to say.
I know. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, Ms. Dumas, I think that's exactly right. I think EPA has some flexibility to set the population levels for what is a disadvantaged community, and that's all within the orbit of defining affordability. That's one of those criteria. And I think that they are looking at communities that have these very small populations, and they have problems, and they just don't move on them. Nothing happens in them. And I think that from EPA's perspective, Ohio EPA's perspective, they want to try to prioritize those problems to get them taken care of. That's obviously, you know, not the way we would look at it, but I think that's, that's the thought.
I think this is the second iteration of this. When we had the construction grants program back in the 70s, 80s, 90s, the larger communities that district included really capitalized because we were ready. And there was a ground swell of non-support for that. We were grabbing the money and others weren't. So DFA had rearranged things to allow other communities of smaller size to obtain the funding. And I think this is kind of the same thing. Most of the disadvantaged communities, those smaller communities, have issues mobilizing, right? And that's part of this discussion, too. How can we get them money, and how can it be mobilized? That's why we want to take part.
Well, I mean, to the point that we have a lot of data and information that would support the work that we're talking about doing. So it's not a matter of figuring out or planning.
That's right.
We already know where the problems are. We just don't have the resources to do the work. So I think that puts us in a different position than a lot of other people, and we should advocate that way.
That's exactly right, President Brown. We have essentially said to US EPA and Ohio EPA that we have the infrastructure already set up to move this money out to help folks.
Okay. Well, stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll go to then our action items. Let's start with authorization to advertise, beginning with request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Advice Code Section 6119.10 for Baldwin Creek Relief Culvert at Storm's Drive in Parma. That's a good name. Project with an anticipated expenditure of $1,868,000. Also request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Advice Code Section 6119.10 for the Pepper Luce Creek Culvert replacement rehabilitation at Gates Mills Boulevard Project with an anticipated expenditure of $2,193,000.
Move for adoptions of Resolutions 81 and 8222.
Motion by Mayor Eli. Second, I'll take Mr. Sulik as a second. Question, if you could, 8122 looks like, I would refer to this as a relief sewer normally, but it looks like it's a relief culvert.
Right.
Building to create some additional capital, capacity, let me say it that way. And then similarly, 8222 is replacing failing culvert, increasing capacity. So it looks like we got a couple of projects. We're trying to eliminate some existing flooding, if you would.
Right.
So if you could address those two.
Okay, we'll do 8122 first. This project is indeed a relief culvert. It's in yellow towards the middle, the section. There's an existing culvert that comes out of an existing stormwater basin, detention basin, called the Bonnie Banks Basin. That culvert, the existing culverted stream path lacks capacity, and there is significant flooding occurring in this area. We've studied this during our stormwater master plans as well as our local sanitary sewer studies. So what has happened already is that basin was dredged. It had significant sediment. A district project came in to dredge that, to reclaim some capacity, to bump up that level of protection. This is the next step, a significant step. There will be other steps. There are some other components that will follow down the road.
So this is going to give a, an increased level of protection, but not where we want to be.
You know, I don't know the ultimate after all projects are in, but this is a significant increase, significant. Whether it's 100-year level of protection, I don't have the answer to that right now, but I know the increase is very significant. Now, the next one, 82. Little bit different. It does involve culverts, replacement of culverts, failing culverts, but it also in the center of this graphic is a detention basin existing within, you know, along the roadway. The detention basin needs to be expanded. The flow path needs to be remeandered a bit. The outlet structure is in poor condition, blocks frequently, needs to be relocated. So we're going to have an expansion of the basin, relocation of the outlet, replacement of a culvert, and some other structural issues to allow flow to both store and release in this area. This has been, had some very major flooding, and I know we're trying to get close to that 100-year level of protection here.
So just a follow-up question on both of them, because both of them are projects where it looks like you're increasing the capacity of the basin itself. So is that due to some historic kind of increase in rainfall, precipitation, or flood? Why, why does it need more?
Well, the increase in rainfall certainly is a factor. You want to get as much capacity as you reasonably can. The basin was never sized for 100-year level of protection, is my understanding.
Okay.
So when we studied this during stormwater master planning, we sought to maximize that level of protection we could provide. Design standards way back in the day when these things were built were not necessarily seeking 100-year level of protection.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you. Any other question? There are none without objection, they are approved.
Resolutions 81 and 82-22.
Thank you. Let's go. Authorization issued request for proposal and entering to agreement. This is authorization issued on RFP in accordance with Ohio Advice Code Chapter 6119 for procurement of electricity for up to two-year period for Southernly Waste Water Treatment Center, George J. McMonigold Administration Building, and approximately 59 outlaying district facilities, and authorization for the chief executive officer to enter into an agreement with the highest-ranked supplier and execute any documents necessary to secure electricity pricing favorable to the district without additional board approval.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question, if you would, this is just, this is just purchasing electricity. I imagine that the distribution carriers first energy?
That is correct, President Brown. This request is specifically for the energy, energy supply to plan.
And to the extent that we're looking for not just good calls, but some type of renewable energy opportunity, how does, how does that factor into this?
We are working with our energy consultant to factor that into our RFP. So we're looking at several options. We're going to take requests for one-year, 18-month, and two-year potential agreements that do incorporate different green energy components to them. We'll evaluate those based on the market. We're expecting a tougher market this time. We think we're going to have higher rates than we had in our last agreement. So working with our consultants, we'll recommend the best option going forward that incorporates, to the extent we can, green, and the best rate possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, then without objection, that's approved.
Resolution 83-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to enter into agreement with several of those, starting with request for authorization entered to professional services agreement with Eileen, Eileen Claimant Inc., United Trainee, and Tri-C Corporate College collectively referred to as a suite of facilitators for educational opportunities and a variety of development topics for district staff in a total amount not to exceed $110,000 for all agreements combined. Request for authorization entered into a loan agreement for Ohio EPA and Ohio Water Development Authority to accept WPCLF funding for construction costs related to the Westerly chemically-enhanced high-rate treatment project for a total amount up to $92,840,000. Request for authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group for support with implementation of regional stormwater management programs, stormwater construction plan as needed under the Advanced Stormwater Planning II project in a total amount not to exceed $3 million. Request for authorization entered into professional services agreement with AdCom, Eileen Claimant Inc., and Six Red Marbles, Six Red Marbles collectively referred to as the suite of instructional designers to provide design and development of training courses for district staff in a total amount not to exceed $285,000 for all agreements combined. Request for authorization to enter into a professional services agreement will be well solutions for wellness program services for calendar years 2022 through 2024 in an amount not to exceed $79,000. And then final request for authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Tata Consultancy Services Limited for software upgrades and related services under the Oracle EBS Upgrade Project in amount not to exceed $667,590.
Move to adopt 84 through 8922.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Questions? I have a couple, two. Let's start with one of my, Resolution 8522. This is below market for 20 years, WPLF, but it looks like we're trying to meet some or beat some type of tie line here. So we're explaining, explanation, please.
Yes, thank you, President Brown. Go ahead, Ken.
Yes, President Brown, this project is specifically being affected by the Build America provisions in the Infrastructure Act that Kyle alluded to in her presentation. Those increased requirements for Build America take effect for new loans awarded starting May 15 and beyond. So we've been working with engineering and with OWDA to try and get this project's loan on their April agenda. So we're a bit out of order here. This award amount represents the highest awardable amount based on the engineer's estimate. We will only enter for a loan of the actual awarded amount. But once we have bids, I believe next week, we'll be able to get the final information, get on the April agenda so that we can avoid potential future administrative issues at a minimum, if not cost, and schedule issues with those new requirements on this project.
Okay. This does somewhat affect the, I guess, the number or the, the ability to have more, I'll say, proposals globally.
Oh, the Build America.
Does limit that to U.S. in so many respects. So it might affect pricing as well?
You're referring to the Build America, Buy America. Yes, go ahead, Devon, I'm sorry.
Yeah, President Brown, members of the board. So this contract, we always knew we were going to go for loan funding. So the existing requirements under the loan funding for Buy American was for iron and steel only. So as we designed that project, that was taken into consideration. And obviously, in some cases, when you have to buy American, when those products exist, it may come at an increased cost. The new requirements over the loan funding, as Kyle mentioned in her update, is being extended to other materials. We did not design that contract with that in mind. So if for some reason we were not able to get ahead of that and were held to those requirements, at a minimum, there would be a lot of administrative work to get exceptions or waivers. And then potentially, if we weren't able to get that, we would have to redesign. That may come at a cost. But in addition to that, there's schedule requirements with the consent decree that we may not be able to meet.
Okay. And President Brown, if I can just clarify, the Build America, Buy America provisions, we have no problem with those. It's just the timing related to, to, to these jobs in terms of the consent decree and having to redesign, because this one was well in the pipeline.
I heard what she said, that basically this was, this was a cake that was already baked.
That's right. That's exactly right.
So I get the implication. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's helpful. All right. 8622, this is the Advanced Stormwater Planning Phase II. Looks like we got a couple of proposals here for this portion of the program. I always like to hear a kind of discussion around who we're actually, who actually is submitting proposals and why the field seems to be getting a little narrower in terms of number of people. We talked briefly before that folks like Jacobs and Stan Tech seem to have basically taken up or, or acquired a number of other, the larger firms that we used to do business with. So it's, it seems to be one reason that, but it's basically two firms that proposed for work that you would think subject matter expertise is out there in a lot of areas. So can you comment on that?
Again, these, you know, there's a lot of work going on, both on the wastewater infrastructure side and the stormwater infrastructure side. We're not even talking about transportation. There's a significant amount of civil engineering work ongoing. So when we issued this RFP, we got two responses. Within those responses, I think the number is three of the four major consultants that led master planning efforts for the district were part of a team. There are, there was another fairly large engineering firm that's part of a second team. So now you have four different major firms involved in the proposal process. One is chosen as the lead, the other the sub. You know, others have chosen not to propose on this project. Sometimes the list is pretty short. Other times, depending on the work, when we issue the general engineering services contracts, they get very competitive, and we have a lot of proposers. So for this one, we only ought to, we still have major engineering firms involved and many sub consultants as well. But two chose to propose on this project. And this is our second advanced planning. We do have another contract underway that involves another firm that has that work.
All right. Thank you. Any other question? There are none without objection. They are approved.
4 through 89-22.
All right, let's go authorization to enter into contract, starting with request for authorization entered to three one-year requirement contracts for grounds maintenance services on our district facilities, BESK Landscaping LLC, in amount not to exceed $87,124.94 for bid groups one, two, and three. BGB Grounds Maintenance LLC in amount not to exceed $50,806 for bid group four. And Henderson Contract Company, Eagan, in amount not to exceed $24,986.57 for bid group five, for a total amount not to exceed $162,917.51 for all bid groups. Request for authorization entered into a three-year requirement contract with Franzenberg LLC for CentraGo Centrifuge rebuilding services at Sutherland and Westerly Waste Water Treatment Centers in an amount not to exceed $738,774.96. And then finally, request for authorization entered to construction contract with Earps Electric Company for Easterly PLC replacing project in an amount not to exceed $8,949,105. Mr. Plouffe, your board?
Move to adopt 90, 92-22.
Motion by Ms. Dumas, second by Mayor Bachi. Question, just if you could, 9222. Easterly, the engineering estimate actually was higher, was 9.8. Easterly, the engineering estimate actually was higher, it was $9.8 million, just came in at $8.9, which is a good thing. And it looks like Erbs is going to be doing a lot of the work, but there's almost 40% FBE, not MBE, on this project. So PLC, that's basically the brains that kind of runs the plant, so this is modernization for Easterly. The second plant will be doing this, so.
Yeah, that's correct. President Brown, members of the board, we did receive two bids on this contract. The engineer's estimate was $9.8 million. The low bid came in about $850,000 under that estimate. The second low bidder was about $100,000 over the estimate. So we did get two strong bids on this project. Both contractors have done a lot of work with the district, including the low bidder, as well as one of its major subs. As you had mentioned, President Brown is an MBE firm that we've also done a lot of significant work with on our projects. They will be doing the systems integration, which is a major component of the project. And yes, the Eastley project is the second one. We've completed the work at Westerly for the upgrades, the automation upgrades there. After Eastley, we'll be coming to the board by the end of this year to ask your approval to advertise for the Sutherland work, and then after that, we'll be coming back, hopefully, probably early next year for the collection systems project.
That'll be interesting. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other question? If not, without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 90 through 92-22.
All right, let's go property-related transactions. They were kind to me this week.
$1.
All right, let's go. Authorization to acquire one access easement at property known as permanent parcel number 60207020 located at 10616 Len Forest Trail in the city of Brexville owned by James E. Berger necessary for construction and maintenance of the picture late dredging project, total consideration of $1.
Move to adopt 93-22.
Motion by Mr. Sulek.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chambers. Question? No question without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 93-22.
Thank you very much. Let's go sewer use code matters. This is adopting the findings of the hearing officer with regard to sewer count Byron Smith's Sewer District Hearing Number 21-016 that the customer's request be denied.
Move to adopt Resolution 94-22.
Motion by Ms. Chambers.
Second.
Second by Mayor Eli. Question? No question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 94-22.
Thank you very much. Let's go authorization to grant credit. This is authorizing the district to issue a credit adjustment total amount $53,417.58 against sewer charges on any RSD account ending in 0002 for aircraft hangar at 26460 Curtis Wright Parkway, Highland Heights.
Make the motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question? Question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 95-22.
Thank you. And finally, let's go authorization to assign, this is authorization to assign the 2022 Green Infrastructure Grants for the Combined Sewer Area Program Agreement Number 22000582 with McGregor Independent Living LP to McGregor Foundation for the McGregor Independent Living Phase II project with all current terms and conditions of agreement to remain unchanged under the assignment.
Move to adopt 96-22.
Motion by Mr. Sulek.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chambers. Is there a question? A question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 96-22.
Thank you very much. That does complete our action items. We have no information item for today. Anything for open session? No. Has a matter of CEOs, anybody signed up to speak to on the public session portion of our agenda on any subject matter?
They have not, Mr. President.
We have no matter for executive session.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we do not.
All right, then that does complete our agenda for today, so I am willing to entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulek. Okay, thank you. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.